Actually, your wife may not even be in this call. Business meeting of August 19th. The way I have the attendance is Wayne Adams is absent, Joanna's absent, Jill Ikost is here, Doug is absent, Lisa O'Connor is here, Brian Page here, Chris Redding here, Chris Weil, and Jack Willett are all here.
2:49.
And we'll start by signing the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll have to flag.
They were there in the corner.
Oh, we got a real one.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I'd like to move the Project Adventure presentation with Jeff Glover to just before my superintendent's report.
It's okay. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 14th, Kentucky Regional School Committee meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
Okay.
They look good.
Public comment? That's not gonna happen. And we'll go to Project Adventure with Jeff Glover, he's gonna give us a presentation on the program.
Alright, thanks for the amendments and thanks for having me here. Alright. Yeah, perfect. So, yes, I'm Jeff Glover, I'm the Youth and College Programs Coordinator for Project Adventure, so we have three of your schools that are coming out to us in October now for sixth grade programs. So, basically just a general overview of Project Adventure and what we do. We've been around since 1971 as a nonprofit organization, started in Hamilton Wenham High School, introducing adventure education, adventure programming in PE classes to supplement their curriculum. And since then, we've been a leader in the field for the last 40 years in experiential education and adventure programming. We do a direct service program, so we have our site in Beverly, it's at Maureen Farm, where we have our ropes course, high ropes course and low ropes course challenges, and we serve about 6,000 students a year there on our course through our Youth and College Programs. So, we're excited to have you guys come out this year for your programs. I believe they're two-day programs each for three of your schools. So generally what that looks like is you'll come out and the students, we gave them in games, initiatives, ground games, kind of get them warmed up. We have the low ropes course, they'll do some low challenges, a couple feet off the ground, and then high ropes course where they're climbing at height on a belay system and they're secure. So, we'll do that over a course a couple days and offer them different levels of challenge. We have three foundational principles that we operate by, so first is experiential education, experiential learning model, where we provide an activity and experience, the students, participants reflect on it and take whatever learning they can from that and apply it forward to their next activity. We also use a challenge by choice concept, so we challenge our participants to push themselves farther than what they think they can do into their stretch zone so that, you know, they're maximizing their learning. But we allow them to choose their level of participation so that they're not, you know, kind of in that panic zone where they're doing something they're really scared of. But we find that by framing that concept that, you know, students will challenge themselves and with the support of their group and other participants, that they end up doing a lot more than they think they can and they feel better about themselves at the end of the day, so. So, challenge by choice, experiential learning model, and then we also always do a full value contract and talk about our values around how we're gonna support each other, how the group's gonna respond and behave, and that's, so those are the kind of four concepts of our programs. So, in addition to our direct service programs, we also train other teachers and counselors and staff to run their own programs at their sites, so we have open enrollment programs at our site, and then we go, we have trainers that go to schools and to other sites to train them. So, we're known as a leader in the field in adventure education and, you know, we have a good reputation for that, we're accredited by the Association for Experiential Education, and not only that, not only are we accredited, but a lot of our full-time staff are board members and help write standards for the entire field. So, we're really involved in quality programming and moving the field forward, so.
Could you talk a little bit about the standards and how the courses are evaluated and kept to, you know, standards and all that?
Sure. Yeah, so AEE, the Association for Experiential Accreditation or Experiential Education, has an accreditation program, and again, that we outfound AEE and we help, you know, write these standards, but we're reviewed independently then by AEE, and they look at all our safety standards, all our risk management protocols, just how we operate our programs, how we staff our programs, how we hire our staff and train them, so that, you know, when we're accredited, then, you know, it's another certifying organization that's checked off on our standards. There's also the Association for Challenge Course Technology, which is a lot more the technical side of the challenge course, but they look at standards like all our equipment and gear and when we retire things and how we operate the challenge course. And again, our, some of our full-time staff has been influential and part of writing those standards for the field of adventure education. So, we have the highest standards, we not only adhere to them, but we help write them, and even the state of Massachusetts in their regulation of challenge courses has, we've basically advised them on what the regulations should be for the state based on the Association for Challenge Course Technology standards, so.
And we'll be having a very low ratio between staff and students, so different than in the past, our staff are actually part of the groups of students and they're responsible for supervision, which takes away a lot of the concerns that we had. And Project Adventure provides the experts to help guide everybody through the courses and through the challenges while they're there. So, the combination of adults really lowers the ratio down to about one to six or so, you know, or even lower in some cases.
Yeah, I agree, we don't go higher than one to 12, if we do, then we hire more staff for our program, so. And then chaperone, same ratio, one to 12, so there's two adults, you know, which is where our staff is focused on facilitation and teaching the core concepts and leading activities, and chaperone can focus on, you know, behaviors and just being part of the group as well, so get some good learning out of, see how kids interact in a different venue.
Yep, and the information that's already been provided to principals includes about a 29, 30-page booklet that then teachers can use throughout the year, so it's not a one-shot deal for us, it's something that can be continued throughout the year with everybody.
What's a typical day, we're going, I think the kids are going for two days?
They're going for two days, and that's so that we don't compact or compress the activities too tightly, when you do that, you limit the number of opportunities for students. So, by stretching it out over two days, they're gonna have multiple opportunities, so as they get more comfortable on the course, they may then in that second day elect to do something to the first day, you know, they would say, no, I'm not doing any of that, you know, it's too high for me. So, it really helps out, but Jeff could talk about the detail.
So, our typical day is nine to three is our program time, and depending on your, the school schedule, you know, buses getting there and when they have to leave, we'll adjust that, but, so typically on a one-day program, for example, they might come, we'll do some large group activities, then we'll split into the small groups of 12 or less, and they'll do some smaller games initiatives, you know, kind of get to know you, community building, and then they'll go to a low ropes course element, and then maybe, you know, have lunch, and then after lunch have one high ropes course element. Having the second day will allow us to revisit another low element and probably get at least two more high ropes course elements in, and those can vary from, you know, a challenging ascending element where they have to climb straight up and they have different obstacles going up, or traversing element where they just go up a tree or a pole and then they have to traverse across, you know, an element, which has different challenges to it as well and then come down. So, by having the second day, they have a lot more opportunity to, you know, really challenge themselves and explore, you know, like Jeff's saying, sometimes, you know, the first time they go up, they might not go all the way or opt not to do, go as far, but then they get more comfortable, their comfort zone expands, and they get more comfortable doing the more challenging stuff, and so they'll have another opportunity to do that.
What about in Clement weather, though?
We run our programs, you know, in rain, we have facilities where we can run games and stuff under tents or indoors. The only time we would come off the course is obviously if there's lightning, thunder or lightning, so we do have, you know, that policy, but generally, you know, we look at, look at the weather and, you know, if it is gonna rain, you know, we obviously will be communicating with the school to prepare for that, and we'll do most of our programming, you know, under, you know, where they're not getting wet, but, you know, still have the option where they can go out and do, you know, the low ropes course, the high ropes, a little more challenging, but, you know, still doable as long as it's not thunder and lightning, so.
What medical staff do you have on?
All our, all our, our staff are trained in first aid and CPR, we don't have like a nurse or somebody on site, you know, for that.
So, we'll be responsible for that part?
Yeah.
So, we'll be, we'll contract for a substitute nurse, and the substitute nurse, depending upon the needs of the students at the school and who are going on the trip, will either stay at the school or go on the trip, so that'll be an easy thing for us to do.
Okay. So, all students not going?
No, all students would be going, what I'm saying is, we would make a decision, does the school nurse go or does the substitute nurse go depending upon what the needs are at the school and on the trip? So, if you have, for instance, diabetic students going on the trip, and you don't have any diabetic students who are left at the school, then we would send the school nurse with the more severely needy students.
Other questions?
And I don't know who I ask this to because it's something, it's the overnight experience part of it.
Yes, that'd be for me.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, so, how does that factor into it, then?
Yeah, so, Project Adventure has a couple of different facilities that they can help accommodate students to sleep overnight, so if you can envision that, let's say there are 90 students per class that are going, that would be for day trip, and we would need parents to organize groups of about 30 or fewer students to stay on the overnight component on each of those two days, so it could be the front end, the middle, and at the end, and there's an open-site camp that they could, like a field, where they would bring their own tents and their own sleeping bags, and parents would chaperone and they could have the overnight experience and then rejoin on the next day, or there were, is it yurts?
It's called a yurt, yeah.
A yurt, there we are. So, you have two yurts, is that it?
Right.
And so, these are enclosures, very large enclosures, that would accommodate probably up to about 15 students each, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, 20 or so.
So, they're both inside and outside accommodations, and what I'd like to do is forward that information to each school, maybe through the PTO, and funnel it out to parents, but the concept would be that we would have a parent or parents organizing that, contacting Jeff at the camp to say, here are the number of kids coming, he would tell you the cost, it's $150 for a night on the open field, $250 for the yurt, and then parents could make a decision about what they would like to do, and kids and parents could elect to stay or not. So, there's the capacity for everybody to have an opportunity, and it would be separate and distinct from the day component that we're offering. So, the liability would fall on the parents, not the school district.
That's right, that's the concept, and that was part of the challenge, there aren't that many camps that I could find that had the capacity to also provide for up to 90 students in this rotation. So, fortunately, Project Adventure had that.
And what do, if people are sleeping in tents or in the yurts, what is restroom facilities or sleeping, is there bunk beds in the yurts or?
You would have your own sleeping bag, and then there are portable units outside that people could use for, you know, facilities. That was sort of another challenge that we faced, not everybody, so there are places that could accommodate people to camp, but not places that also had the bathroom facilities, which made it a little hard, so again, Project Adventure had, you know, all the supports that we were looking for.
Anything else?
Well, thanks for coming out, Jeff, I really appreciate that, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
And we'll, you know, get the information out and we'll connect for some more of the details, this is fresh since like last Friday.
Right, yeah.
That we met, so things are hopping along. We were fortunate to get the dates right away because September had already been scheduled, so we have Donahue going on the 14th and 15th, Page going on the 20th and 21st, and Bagnell going on the 22nd and 23rd, so.
I've already been in contact with some of those.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, superintendent's report. So, yeah, so I have a laundry list of things to go through about each school and our preparedness for opening the school year, so I'm gonna go school by school for you, and so here we go. So, overall, all of the security systems are now in place, so whenever you go to any school, even the middle school now, if you press the buzzer, they can remotely unlock the door and they can see who's at the door. The one hitch for us is that Dan's office downstairs may not come online until about two or three weeks into September, but we're working as quick as we can. So, every school will have a remote system, you can see who's at the door, and we'll be all set for that. Sweeter is all set to reopen, they've re-tiled the guidance area, and there's a special ed office that's down in one of the wings of the school, that's been re-tiled, and we changed all the sink faucets in the school, so there was a Board of Health concern about the sink faucets and all those have been swapped out. Donahue, we repaired the walk-in freezer, the cafeteria and selected rooms have been painted, and again, all the faucets have been changed out, so there was a Board of Health concern about that. Bagnell, some great painting has happened at Bagnell, I don't know if all of you are familiar with Bagnell, Doug certainly is more, and Jack more familiar maybe than others, but, because of the building project, but Bagnell has some pretty distinct colors in their hallways, and now, if you've been in recently, now when you come in, that corridor that's facing you when you come in is a great new blue color. It is so great. But then, I look down to the, yeah, it was the yellow one?
The angry yellow.
Yeah. We have changed to peaceful blue from angry yellow, but then if you look down to the eighth grade wing, we still have sort of an annoying red color, so someday we'll
Angry red.
You know, it's, it's challenging color schemes, but we made that hallway, we painted that hallway, so that was a huge benefit. And Page, you may remember that they provided for some money in the town meeting for us to upgrade some of the kitchen facilities, so the dishwasher, sink, mixer, rebuilding the refrigerator, all that's been accomplished. We have some challenges on the second floor and third floor, the floors needed repair, the floors are a little unusual, they're made of a soft material, sort of like the particle board that's in your home on your wall, and so it's easily dented and not easily fixed. So, we've had some damage occur in the second and third floors, some pitting, and that will be completed by Thursday, and then tiling will occur after the material that has to go in place has cured, so, yep.
Those floors have asbestos under the tiles, so they're baiting that out.
They're taking care, whatever has to happen, they're taking care of that, so I'm not sure of the process, I just know that there was some difficulty with the pitting.
I understand, I've worked in that building, but we need to know that they're baiting those floors and not just, if the contractor's going in there and cutting those tiles open.
Yeah, no, that, that's not our process, so we always take samples of our tiles before we move forward with anything, just like we did here, you know.
I think years ago they replaced.
No.
Four years, five years, they redid those, but then they were denting in after that.
I'll check.
I did that project.
Yeah.
They have VCT tile over all their floors, which is over asbestos linoleum.
Yeah.
So, just make sure that that's.
Yeah, I'll double check it.
Thank you.
It doesn't hurt to double check, but I know that is one of the things that Greg is highly sensitive to, and even here, you know, when we had our little water problem here, we were going along taking samples to make sure we knew what was what, but I'll double check. Let's see what we've got here. In the middle school, tomorrow we have the first meeting of the roof contractor, and then the roof will get underway, the boilers.
Especially Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, okay. The boilers are in the building and connections will be completed in the next couple of weeks, and the little boilers and the little boiler pads take up a tiny little part of the room that used to be consumed by all of this equipment, and if any of you stop by, I'd be happy to take you downstairs to see it, it's pretty amazing, all the stuff that's been taken out. We also have hot water heaters on site, and if you went around to my area, you would see that the oil tank on the end has been dug out and they're filling that in as we speak, so that was a 10,000 gallon oil tank. Asphalt repairs around the campus will be made on Friday, Friday is like asphalt day. So, we have on the track area, Greg will talk about this, we have multiple trucks of asphalt coming to deliver, as you'll hear from Greg. Let's see, we rebuilt the freezer in the middle school, and this will be the last time that we can repair it, the Board of Health is requiring that we take a more direct approach to replacing that in the future, but we do have a rebuilt freezer there. We fixed the storm drains around campus, tuned and calibrating the heating units in the middle school so that they now will function and regulate the heat in a more contained way, so when you turn it to be 68, it will be 68, and it won't vary, you know, across rooms. So, that's been integrated to some degree into the electronic component of the new system, which will be good. We've renovated some of the library space to accommodate some of the high school students who'll be using the library space, and as you know, I'll be losing my conference room and the room next to the IT room for high school space after tomorrow's event. So, high school, we have, the high school football field has been seeded and fertilized, and from what I understand, we have a really great grassed-in area, so we're well-prepared for football, they're currently practicing along the first baseline, is that right?
Between the football field and the building, that's their practice field right now, we removed the mound so they wouldn't be tripping over it and things like that, replaced the irrigation filled in all the holes and pits which flat and leveled for them to practice on.
Tomorrow at 8:30, barring anybody from throwing themselves in front of the doors, there'll be a wrecking ball coming, and Jack and I will be close proximity.
I'll be there at 7:30.
So, that will be demolished tomorrow, I guess it doesn't take long once the wrecking ball starts. The cafeteria and hallway here, as you saw, has completely new green tile, and into the entryway of the cafeteria, we weren't able to do the whole cafeteria, which is unfortunate. If on your way out, you take a walk just a little bit down past the cafeteria, look in the guidance area, nurses area, there's just one or two little rooms in the nurses' area that need to be tiled, all that room has been completed. On the other side of the hall, Dan's office, they have a new rug and new walls, and I think they're pretty much set to go as well.
So, will those two offices be all set? Next week?
Yeah.
It's a great habit, something that happens.
Okay.
I have to get some service.
No problem.
Go by the window.
Go by the window here.
The void that was caused under the nurses' office, that's been filled in, so now we have a pretty big mass of concrete sitting there under the nurses' office. Let's see, and we were really lucky there, there are some pipes that run through that area, and we were like holding our breath that when the concrete was injected, it wouldn't crush the pipes that were under there because they were old, and we got away with it, so it's all good. The problematic pipe that caused the flood has been capped and it's been injected with concrete, so that's all taken care of. We are replacing the gas stove in the high school that is 1950's vintage with a two-year-old stove that we got secondhand for, very inexpensive, I think it was $500, and they're typically around $10,000, so that was a blessing for us. And so, that's all the school stuff, and Greg and I agreed that he would do the track and the grounds project, because he's got all the language for that, so.
Jeff, just one, just one question, on the pipes under, when we ejected the concrete, yep. Is there service going through the pipes?
Yeah.
So, are we, are we gonna have an issue if something happens to the pipe? Now it's covered in concrete?
It would be no different than if we didn't do it, so if we had crushed the pipes, we'd have to then go back and dig them out and put in some new pipes, so it's probably strengthening them if anything, you know, for right now.
Okay.
So, one is an exit, and another one is a water pipe that comes up for bathroom service, so we have some bathrooms that are connected and they all mesh down there, so Greg hadn't, seems to think this is the best that we could come out of it, so, you know, we're pleased with that. It would have cost us, I think, about $10,000 if they had crushed in, so it's a little savings. Okay.
Okay.
Here we go.
Under the grounds project, in case anybody hasn't noticed, there's a grounds project going on, my shoes may never get the mud off them. Anyways, I'll work my way around, the field out front, which is the field hockey field, as I'm sure you've seen, has the sod in place, that is a six-week growing period, we're a little over a week into that now, we had a little bit of a stress early on, but they've adjusted the watering and it seems to have taken root. The side areas, which supposed to be, what you see now that looks kind of dug up, that's going to be re.
Seeded.
Seeded, where they put down some more loam and bring it all to the thing, they were gonna do that this week, but as we were adjusting the water to make sure the grass was coming in, it got, we had to put a little extra water down and it got a little bit too muddy, they didn't want to drive on it, so they're gonna be doing that next week. As we move towards the field out front here, that'll be the last field they tackle, it's the one we weren't anticipating using this year at all, that'll be the multipurpose field, nothing has gone on there other than the removal of the tennis courts, but it has been graded and the stuff has been taken away. That'll also be the shortest turnaround time for that field, that's only a two-week turnaround, they're just going to grade it, the loams off back already been sifted, it'll be transported to the front, put over the drainage and seeded, and the irrigation system will be added. The irrigation system takes about two days to put in, these guys move pretty quickly. Getting behind the middle school, that's where all the fun's happening. As the superintendent said, Friday's gonna be asphalt day, the D areas inside the track, which are basically the running pits for the long jump, triple jump, and the high jump, those pads, they're going to be asphalted base and top coat on Friday, the track has its base coat, it'll be getting a second top coat on Friday. Inside, the drainage has already been installed and is completed, the irrigation has been installed and completed, once they bring that second level of track into it, then they'll start bringing the dirt that's already stockpiled in the middle and smooth it out into the area to bring it up to grade, and the sod will be placed down next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The irrigation system is going to run, right now it's running off a fire hydrant for the front, from, out of our, using our good friends in Grove ones, Water and Sewer allows us to use their water, the back fields will be.
We're paying for the water.
We're paying for it, but the back fields will be, eh, that's what contingency funds are for, the back, the back fields will be handled by the original well system until the pump comes online, the pump has been delayed until October, part of that was a redesign. Part of that was a redesign because we insisted on a piece be put into it, which is a salinization meter. So should any water be drawn from the river, which will be the main irrigation part of it, that gets a little salty, it will shut itself off, so it won't kill the fields. The bright side of it all is, by doing it this way, we've created two redundant watering systems. Because we're leaving the valve boxes for both to hook up to the fire hydrant for the front and the thing out back, so should it ever happen, we have a second source of water available to all the fields. So that was kind of a reverse blessing in disguise. Um, moving forward, the, all the electrical out back has been installed for most of the mains. Uh, the fence posts have been installed, the fencing will go in next week onto those posts once they pour the second coat of asphalt. The week after sod is the top dressing for the track, they'll be spraying the stuff that goes on the top. They let that dry for approximately a week and a half to two weeks and then they line it. Um, after that, that part of it will be done. The pads are already in for the, the boxes are in for the high jump and long jump, they're stainless steel. The construction guys are very happy to see that, a lot of people just put pressure-treated two-by-sixes and fill them with sand. We have stainless steel, they're filled with special sand that does a clump and they have covers that'll also be covered with the same track material to keep animals out and keep it fresh. The pads for the discus and the shot put are in place. Javelin will be done out front on the practice field when they hold a meet, because they found that it's better to keep the people throwing long javelins away from the other people. So that was their recommendation. Moving across from the track into the tennis courts, the retaining wall for the, uh, tennis courts was poured today. And the decorative retaining wall, the hole was dug and the base dome was put in today as well. That wall will start Friday and move into next week. The access road has been prepped for also for our base and asphalt. The softball field, they're hoping tomorrow to actually start installing the backstop area for that. The retaining wall for the L field and the fence post placement has already been installed. I know it looks like a mess, but this will come together very quickly in the end. They are probably about two weeks behind schedule, but it'll be in the areas that we don't need until the spring. We don't need that field out front, we don't need the tennis courts and the softball field till spring. So I told them to focus on the two areas we needed quickly and that'd be okay. When we have those, a couple of those downpours, our soil was very clay, they couldn't really go on it for a couple of days, it delayed them, it would clog up the tracks of the thing. I went out and got it on my shoes, it took me an hour to scrape it off, it was just, you couldn't go on there right now. Luckily, the new drainage systems that are put in will keep that from happening. The gully washer we had a few Fridays ago, that really came down, immediately came down, looked at that front field, there wasn't a drop of water on it. But it was pouring out the drainage system pipes, so it was working as intended. I'm assuming the ones out back will also work as intended. Uh, the full date still now to get off complete, all sections, including the ones we talked about, the slight delay, is now September 26th, they're done. Every, we have instruction meeting again on Thursday, I was talking today, they're still holding that date, they don't seem to perceive a problem. The weather's been good, the gra, the cool nights, days, they'll help the grass adhere a little bit better anyways. And right now, we are on time, except for the little bit of delay there, we are under budget and we're moving forward as quickly as possible.
And, uh, Merrimack kids will be going to Merrimack?
Oh, in the meantime, for, uh, field hockey, while that finishes curing, they're gonna be practicing at Donahue and playing their game at Donahue, that field was lined today. And the soccer kids are going to be going over to the town, uh, park in Merrimack. We thought that was probably a better option since we can put them all on the same bus and just drop them off, because the parents pick them up from the practice field. So the one bus can drop them off at Donahue and then move on to the town park instead of going in two different directions still.
And so there aren't any other teams that are affected?
No, football's still out back, cross-country runs at pipes, Dave. Um, so does, golf plays obviously at April Country Club, so those are the only sports that would be, and there won't even be for the full season, they will be back here by the end.
And we're thinking about, uh, for the last cross-country meet, to have it come down and actually end in the track. And from that time, uh, moving on to perhaps into the weekend, we were thinking about doing a Relay for Life as sort of a, an event to kick off and bring people in and kind of show everything off. So we just have an idea about that, we don't have any, uh, concrete plans yet.
Uh, Greg.
Yes.
When is the front field in the field inside the track that they're not gonna be used this year?
The field inside the track eventually will, yeah, they'll finish soccer out there.
When?
That's a six-week growing time, if the sod goes in next week, it'll probably be mid-October, so they'll play their final games in October, nearly November, they'll be able to play out there.
Okay, and the, and the company owns the two mowings or three?
Three.
Three mowings?
The contractor owns the first three mowings, the first one for the field out front will be next week. Before they do the loam and seed for their outside, they're gonna give it a bow.
Okay.
The pump house, that's the building that's out behind the middle school, way down by the river.
Yes.
Is the fence still in good standing around the southern tank that's there?
Um, I know exactly what you're, what you're talking about, because it looks kind of rough, but we also have, if you look around, we also have fairly significant pruning project going on that hasn't been done, cutting things. And that's the last place they're gonna go with the access road and we're gonna cut all that stuff away and we're gonna get a good look at it.
Right, but my concern is that's an extremely deep tank, you don't want anybody.
Understood, understood, and that'll be one of the things we look at when we say we're considered under budget. You know, obviously we'll use some of that contingency money to pay for the water bill and things like that, but these are some of the little extras we'll be looking at at the end. After we buy all the equipment and things that were included in the project, things that we didn't see or didn't miss. Uh, we had, we had, the only change order we've had so far is the middle school roof drains were tying into an undock, uh, an unshown, uh, pipe, pipe, there you go, pipe. It was causing a lot of flooding out there because it was just going out into the middle of the field, that was causing a lot of the mud. It wasn't on the plan, so what we did is we broke that off, had it dug out, and then we tied it to the main drainage system running around. And all the rain now is hitting that and going around the field. But that was a small change order of $7,000, but there's no way we weren't gonna do that one. So, other than that, there hasn't been any other alternative changes to the plan.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Uh, just before, the, the track, has MIA come out and looked yet?
Uh, we have a certified track builder, but I'm, they haven't come out yet. The, uh, Gail has had the certified track builder out once and they did for the base coat and marked the inner lane to make sure at the, at the inner point. It was more than enough that if you lined it going further away, you'd make the standard and they said you're fine with the first wheel. So now, when they put the second coat down Friday, they have laser grids. And they run machines and the, they walk with the gentleman as they're laying down the inner line of it. So yeah, they're, between the certified track builder and the bond, yeah, that track is gonna be the right size.
I mean, it looks huge, it looks beautiful.
Well, it's, it's bigger than most high school tracks, because most high school tracks have an eight-lane straightaway for the running the sprint events. And then they go, when they make the turns to do the longer ones, they go, they drop down to sick lanes, ours is eight lanes all the way around. So that's why it looks a lot bigger than, you know, they say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, retreat with Mike Gilbert on the S. So we have a couple of proposed, uh, dates and is it the second and ninth, Marion? So we're wondering what your preference would be to meet with Mike Gilbert, second or ninth, what days of the week?
Are they both Tuesdays?
Both Tuesdays.
And it would be at the regular, um, subcommittee time, well, we said, I think I said either 6:00 or 6:30, the regular subcommittee time starts at 5:00.
Yeah.
Well, the first is Labor Day, so.
It's the day after.
Yeah, but why don't, why don't we go for the ninth, oh, I prefer the ninth.
Everybody else okay with the ninth? Yeah, the second is our first day back with kids.
Yeah.
Because we have subcommittee meetings on the second.
They won't be on any schedule. This is replacing that.
This would replace these, Jack, so that you'd be coming on the ninth?
What's, what's going to happen, the second, we're not gonna have the subcommittee meetings?
No. That's correct. This would replace that. Uh, you could, you could all have the subcommittee meetings if you want to, I'm just suggesting that if you wanted to have this and replace it. Any finance to sign?
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking, finance committee, I'm sure.
Well, you can have that.
We'll have 5:30.
We'll have things to meet, we, yeah, we always meet like at 5:00 or 5:30.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, Mike Smith's working on the, uh, policies for the, uh, that's gonna be presented in September. It's gonna be on the 20th, when is that, meeting 23rd?
Well, Mike Smith is working on some ideas around.
16.
Building use, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, um, you know, maybe we could bring that to the finance committee. Or we could have a finance committee meeting for a short time and maybe a policy committee meeting and then go into, uh, a meeting with, um, with Mike Gilbert. Would that be better?
Yeah, I, I'd rather do it one night rather than do it two nights.
So you wanna do the ninth?
So if we did the ninth.
Raise your hand.
Yes, it looks like everybody wants the ninth.
I'm holding back because I have no idea what like back-to-school nights and open houses and all those things yet that are gonna start, telling me.
Yeah.
Doug, what about you? How many you get going back?
Ninth is fine.
So the ninth, and you wanna have finance and policy first?
So if we were to have finance at what time, 5:00?
5:30, I can do five.
5:30?
If we do 5:30 and 6:00 for the other one and 6:30.
And then start at 6:30 with Mike Gilbert.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You said 5:00, 5:30 and 6:00.
5:30, 6:00 and then 6:30.
Which, by, by the way, anyone can attend any of the meetings. So if you want to be here at 5:30 so you don't miss a 6:30 meeting, or the sixth meeting, please come.
Sounds like fun, but thanks. So that'll work. Updated, um, bullying prevention intervention plan. Yeah, so the State Department came out with some required language and the required language, um, really hits two issues. One is to identify populations of students who may be prone to bullying or receiving the bullying. And the other one is to, uh, inform parents of their website, so if they're not satisfied with what goes on here, they can go and, and register something on the state's website. So those are the only changes that are, are in the policy. And when it came to us, you know, I said, rather than going back to the subcommittee, we don't have any control over this language, it has to be.
Has to be state law.
So we have no choice? This has to be added, right, to our policy. Does anybody wanna make a motion to accept the updated bullying prevention intervention plan?
Still moved.
Any discussion? Hall in favor?
Jeff, I just, I just had one, well, actually, I guess, it's not discussion, it's just a question.
Yeah.
The, the forms on the back, were these Penntucket made or were these state mandated?
No, these are Penntucket-made forms.
Okay.
Yeah. We use the state, uh, forms as a guide though for what we do and then when we submit, they see everything that we've got.
So these are, these are required, if, if somebody comes to a teacher or says, you know, I'm being bullied, these are forms that are required?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a question on page seven, I just happened to notice it when I was looking at the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
It's not about the change though.
Okay.
But it, um, under section B, under counseling and other services.
Yeah.
It lists that, I know it's an example, but it says programs that teach, uh, pro-social skills and conflict resolution at the elementary level.
Mm-hmm.
Second step. Does that kind of, it doesn't really lock us into the second step program if we decide.
No, it says, so EG is for example.
Right.
So it gives an idea of what that might look like, but it doesn't lock us in.
Okay, but then for high school, middle school, it says health and homeless programs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks for that. Acceptance of mass general law for reporting purposes.
Annually, as the state does its budget, they like to tweak things for lots of different reasons, I won't get into why they did this, I know why they did it. Um, basically what we have to do is vote as a committee to accept this section. What it does in per pupil spending, as we all know, you just can't take our budget to buy the type of number of our children and get the per pupil spending, because certain things are allowable and certain things aren't. Uh, what the state is now asking everybody to do is to accept this section if you choose. And it'll allow you to blend in over four years at 25%, 50, 75 and finally 100, the cost of our retirees' health insurance to our net minimum spending report. The only, they had this, you know, a couple of different ways of looking at this. One is, you know, obviously we're well above the net minimum spending, but this law is basically passed to help schools who are barely hitting the net minimum spending. It's finding a way to throw costs, they've already got into that to help them, it doesn't really apply to us. The second part of it though is, if we don't do this and everybody else isn't doing it, it'll look like we're spending less per pupil as everybody else includes this cost and we don't. So, again, it really has no bearing on us other than a small reporting thing, so I would recommend that as a committee, we vote to accept this and we'll fund it in over the next four years.
Any questions? Oh, we have a motion to accept it. Make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Any discussion? Hall in favor of the motion? School committee reading schedule fiscal year 15. The copy in the package. Marion, do you wanna just, uh, refresh our memories about what you did for April, maybe February and April was out of it?
The third Tuesday on February and April was school vacation, so I moved it to the following Tuesday. Because typically, people don't like to meet on February and April vacation.
Mm-hmm. True.
Because they're not here.
Right, they're on vacation.
Typically. My only question, I laid this out on the calendar, there are some, some places we have, you know, significant gaps because of the movement. Do any of those impact the budget scheduling or we passed it at that point? This is the usual, this is pretty typical for what we do, so it hasn't impacted us in, in the last couple of years.
Make a motion to approve the school committee and subcommittee meeting agenda as written.
Second.
Question. Do all the meetings have to be in the library?
Where's a better place, is my question, with the exception of the heat of the summer, that last meeting was.
Brutal.
Yeah. We can accommodate that one in the summer and go to the cafeteria, but the cafeteria is not for when you have people attending, it's very, not very hospitable. They can't hear, we can't hear them, they're a mile away.
I disagree with you, I've been doing it for years in there.
Doesn't mean it was right though.
Right, I mean, it was, it was hard to hold meetings in there.
Can we move, because I, I know everyone hears the vending machines, because those are running.
Yeah, that's hard.
Those are hot.
No, but it's the heating system.
Can we not turn it around and go here?
I guess with, my question is with the exception of the hot summer, what's wrong with this room?
There's no way of moving it.
I, I also think if people are trying to come to the meeting, there's a lot of people who wouldn't even know where this is and they'd get lost. No, seriously, like unless we have signs.
They could go upstairs in the gym.
Yeah, compared to the cafeteria is very visible from the parking lot.
Facilities.
Did you say that the, um, conference room is being used now for?
Classroom.
Where, where's the new video room, I mean, that's where we ended up, is the video room down there?
Library over at the middle school.
No, the, the video room's going downstairs.
No, it's, they, next year they're using the library at the middle school.
Yeah, we have a computer lab downstairs, but the video, just like we did it during the spring.
What would that be?
What about the middle school?
That's going downstairs here.
Middle school cafeteria, maybe we could try.
Isn't that, or if it's, or the library there is not.
Don't they have vending machines there too though?
No.
Can employ them for an hour.
As long as they have some air handlers moving the air, it's gonna make a difference, these places here.
Just open up the window.
Well, why don't we do this?
Oh, I can in my garage.
Improve the schedule and keep it currently for the high school and let Jeff investigate whether there are opportunities we have. We'll do it spur of the moment. Let Jeff find a place that you all like.
Well, that was the problem a few years ago, it was fine.
What, what about the middle school auditorium?
There's no air conditioning there.
Let's, let me, let me look around, let me look around.
The auditorium, that's like, then you're like up on a.
It's, yes.
Then you're like condescending, looking down.
That's like in the back part of the building.
Let me look around, first let's approve the schedule.
Why we shouldn't tear down the boards.
We're only, we're only approving the dates where we sit, I don't care.
We're gonna say approve the dates only.
Yeah, this is all I have to approve. Okay. And, yeah, I'll, I'll put on my best thinking, right after the wrecking ball event tomorrow, I'll look into it.
Adequate facilities.
You struck.
Do you know who got the contract to tell them now?
Greg.
Was it Kidder?
It was, that name sounds familiar.
Kidder recognized.
We vote the motion.
It's a big claw.
It's a, it's a claw. Picks it up and shakes it.
It's a big claw.
All in favor of the motion to accept the meeting dates? All right, then, so you know my challenge, so. Does it have to be held on site? I mean, I know West Newbury and the new police station had a public meeting room. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be held on site. You have the place behind the town, I mean, you've got other places that are not a mile away. We did, we, we did try traveling.
Well, but I think some of it was for the, the.
The equipment's an issue.
Right, the, the equipment couldn't be moved.
Getting the equipment there and back, even when we used to do the town meetings about the budget, that was part of it.
Let me give it some thought, let's see what we can come up with.
I'd say the campus, it's the central location for all three towns.
Do it up the trail.
It's an equal blanket.
It may be the nicest possible.
Band or a device.
Okay, last item, approve position for special assistant to the superintendent through December 13th, 2015. December thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. I'm sorry.
There's a motion.
So moved. Not too much.
Second.
Any discussion?
I know nothing about this, so I don't know what-